Six thirty-four, calling to order. And I get a motion to approve the agenda that may be amended.
Motion.
And, you know, we're gonna do the three. We're gonna stick in between three and four, the capital budget part.
Okay.
So, and there may be an executive session needed at the time. So can I get a motion to approve adding capital budget side that Tom could agree for us?
Sub moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes. All three of us for December seventeenth. This is a special select board minutes. I didn't see anything, guys. This was with Abby's present budget presentation. Okay, can I get a motion to approve it?
Sub moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we had all three of us, December eighteenth, special select board minutes. This was when the rec director came in and did present her budget. I didn't see anything there either. All in favor?
Aye.
Then we had a special one for, it says December seventeenth and eighteenth. This is the nine-thirty and nine AM.
And then we had another one, nine-thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I heard.
Yeah, this is, yeah, okay. So this is mostly going into executive sessions.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's, that is, then we have one for Monday, December twenty-third, which was Chris and I going in to go into executive session. And this was just us going over the plans for the Great Gulf One A one day. All in favor, Chris?
Aye.
So now we jump into where we just changed to the capital budget. Okay. So you can see that most of these items are pretty much the same. There's a couple increases in town hall.
What page is the cap going?
Eighteen, bottom of page eighteen.
On my way. There we go.
And really, there's, there's a three hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollar increase when you look at this year over last year, but one item has a three hundred thousand dollar increase. And of course, I'm sure the board will want to talk about that.
Yeah, I would start out with, I know when Abby came in and she said, this is what we would have to be doing to move forward, to keep up, so not all of it is for next year. Okay, so I would like to get back from Abby if, you know, I think, I think we kind of figured out like eighty cent, eighty thousand dollars is a penny on the tax rate.
Yep.
So, you know, in the past, we were only doing a hundred thousand. I mean, even if we came in at two hundred thousand dollars, you know, we're dropping a hundred K, so about a penny and a quarter or whatever, penny and a third, whatever it is right there. So we can just get that answer from Abby.
I'm not clear on what the question is.
I would like to see how we got to a three hundred thousand dollar increase.
She came in and she said to us because we never really, we were always doing a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand. And then she had told us that to do a mile was like.
X amount.
X amount of money to go forward.
But how.
By building up the capital, so for the future or whatever that we would have. So that's where I'm.
But how much are we going to do a year anticipating our needs? So what's the plan, you know, five years?
Right, and that's what I was.
Five years, it's only a mile.
Right.
Or maybe it's ten miles that need to be done. I think we, I mean, we've seen some deterioration in some of the roads, but I'd like to just kind of get a map out of what she thinks might have to be done in the next five.
I mean, I think you and I are, and Rob, you stepped in, Chris and I are saying, we'll probably need one more meeting before the end of the week or whatever.
Okay.
All right, so the question would be back to Abby is what Chris is asking, that three hundred thousand dollars, you know, could you get away with two hundred thousand dollars this year? Okay? And Chris would, and I would also like to know, like, you know, just refresh us in our minds what a mile cost us and how many miles she's looking to do over the next.
Yeah, what's the.
Three to five.
Yeah, I'm looking, what's the plan?
All right, so.
She went over something like that, but I would need.
Yeah, but that was like a while ago.
Yeah, yeah, me too, I know. I remember something like that, but.
Right.
Now seeing a three hundred thousand dollar change, we didn't be reminded of it, right?
Right.
Do we lose any bonds this year payments?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
I think, so the bond.
The garage.
But we're losing, but there's a fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollar increase, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so we were losing all the ones in parentheses.
But is some, that's, I'm guessing some of that is from the FEMA stuff? Bond payments we have to make on that?
No, there's a garage.
The C, the CBNA and then the refi interest?
FEMA, the five, the FEMA bond, five-eighty-eight K, that's the five hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars from Irene.
Oh, okay.
All right.
These are, so what is the FEMA CBNA?
Tom?
I couldn't tell you. CBNA.
Oh, that's, that's the, that's the Community Bank North America.
That's what I thought was, yeah.
Okay, so that's new to us.
That's new, but we're supposed to get that reimbursed, but we don't know when, so we can't put it in next year's revenue because it's an expense.
So we're basically right there alone, we're at thirty-seven thousand into the fifty-four increase.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I think the big one's at the bottom.
Yeah, the town hall, the one point six.
Sixty-four, one-seventy-five.
So, so we're paying.
Principal of a hundred.
Between principal and interest, we're paying eighty, a hundred and eighty-five thou, a hundred and eighty.
Ninety, a hundred and ninety-seven?
Yep.
Okay. I felt the term was longer than that, so, okay. And then, so we're.
That was a ten-year note.
That's a ten-year, and we're, we haven't, we borrowed the one point six. What did we do with the four hundred thousand?
Sitting in a restricted fund, right, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, so we're holding that money, we still have that despite.
For the renovation.
I'm just making sure.
To me, there's a difference between notes and bonds. And I know we bond.
We should have borrowed, just what we needed at the time or whatever, but we already borrowed.
Wow, we thought we would.
We're gonna be fast.
We were told four hundred grand.
Yeah, and now that we've touched on that, you know, we would likely have to put some more money in the budget to finish that in this budget we're doing right now, fiscal year twenty-six.
So this is why I really do think.
Waiting for numbers from, from the contractor and we're supposed to have them on the nineteenth. Yeah.
So this is why I do think we need to have another meeting, we're just catching up on stuff here. So, I mean, that's it, that's, that's it, everything here. We, and this is where like Rob was, you know, okay, we, and we keep on saying, we got the first look. Okay, well, you know, we'd like to go through some of this stuff, because most of this is, you know, personnel, people and stuff like that.
So the budgets, just going through capital stuff, we've increased on twenty thousand dollars in guardrails?
Yes.
And that's primarily due to Killington East?
Yeah.
Does that hit there? Okay.
Yeah, because we're gonna really deplete that fund. We do have a little bit of a fund balance, well.
And how did we come up with another equipment replacement? I imagine that's Town Garage?
Yes, it is. It's all the truck, trucks and rolling stock, you know, anything on tires.
And so we feel we have to raise it to twenty-two thousand?
Yep. I mean, if we were at two-twenty-seven back in.
How did they determine that?
We can show you the, the actual capital improvement plan. It's, it spells out when each piece of equipment gets replaced.
Yep.
At what time and how much it costs. And that's what drove that up to an additional twenty-two thousand. So we can do that when we talk about the paving.
Yep.
I mean, I look at the FY twenty-four budget, it was two-twenty-seven, one-twenty-five, and the actual was two-twenty-seven, one-twenty-five, so to go to two-fifty, that's the ten percent inflation number from twenty-four to.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, we took, I mean, last year, we took a big number on the grader, okay? You know, do we have to go that far? I mean, we're.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to go through.
I would just like to see that laid out, so that we're.
Yep, we can do that, all right. Rob, go ahead, Chris.
Rutland County taxes, appropriations, wait a minute, I don't remember. I think the rest of it was, it was personnel and.
Now, in here, since we received the email that our police department would now like to go into contract talks, correct?
Yes.
Unionizing?
Yes.
Did we, that was after we started doing this budget?
Mm-hmm.
So we should have like a number of what it's taking us to do with the, with the highway department. So do we have that into legal for twenty-twenty-six?
We do not, yeah.
Okay.
And that is very pricey.
Well, that's what I mean.
We've spent about twelve thousand dollars in legal fees already on the highway department.
I looked at the expenditures going out, and I was a little shocked by that.
Yep.
So that's on the contracts or whatever.
Fleeceing.
You know, but, you know, we have to understand as a group, that's when people want to go into these things, that we have to also budget for the expense or whatever on there. So.
I think we should have line item in there for legal.
Yeah.
Right now.
Right, and show, so the voters can see.
A separate one?
A separate line item for dealing with this situation in the police department.
Well, both.
Both.
I know, both should have it.
Yeah, it'd be good to see both.
We should take it out of legal like we're doing with, whether it's, you know, zoning or whatever, okay?
So, and then, and then there is the money that we're going to need that I think we're not gonna have until the nineteenth for the town hall.
Yeah.
So I think we should have a meeting right after that, that when we have that number, so we can work that in, okay?
Okay.
And then there's a number that we need, and I was talking to Tom just a little bit before we got here. There's the carryover that you would take from two years ago, the twenty-twenty-four, I think. We're in five now, so twenty-twenty-four, if you're over, you put it towards to lower the property taxes. So the vote is usually over to, but if you're under, you're supposed to throw that in to clear it up because you just don't say we're under and where'd you get the money from? If you have enough flat, just raising your funds. So we need to get that number from the finance, and through, and that would be from R H Smith. Then we have, and I mean, some of the reasons why we're gonna, I think that number is going to be under, okay? That we're gonna have to carry a loss to make up because, number one, we've got those solar panels that are gonna be showing in that year that we never approved, but it was purchased.
Yep.
Two hundred K there. And then, you know, we're still getting through with the, setting up the interest and everything for these payments, for the TIF that gets carried over that we all, we put out as a vote, and it carried over into twenty-twenty-eight that, and it gets worked into Great Gulf picking that up. So we just have to get that in and, you know, it's, we didn't, you know, we didn't have the finance group figuring this stuff out back in twenty-twenty-three and didn't have a manager at that time figuring it out either back then. And that was a few managers ago. So the other thing is, is that the seven hundred thousand dollars for the workforce housing, okay? And you're gonna be shocked, but we already spent that funds, but that's gonna be into whatever year's loss or gain. That's last year's or whatever that goes from there.
I think it is, yeah.
So we're gonna have to talk to the auditor to find out. We received the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the resort before it was sold. Powder paid the funds to us.
What did we do with it?
It, it just goes into the general fund, okay?
Why wouldn't it be applied right to that note?
Because the note was borrowed and then it was a one-year note, so the note was already paid. So it's just the general fund, correct, Tom?
Yeah.
So it's just like you borrowed money, but then we use the cash flow for it. So it's replacing the cash flow going out.
So what's the total indebtedness now in that land?
The three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But it's not, there's not a, there's, there's not a loan.
It's down cash, right?
It's down cash. We paid that one-year note off.
Okay.
All right, and we were expecting to come to an agreement with the resort and Great Gulf. You know, we got that big Happy Gilmore check, okay? And Great Gulf called today because they've been going back and forth and working. They're going to wire transfer into our bank account this week seventy thousand dollars, okay?
Seven thousand?
Seventy, seventy. They want to make five payments to us.
Oh.
Okay, so it would be, let's see here, seventy thousand dollars, because I made sure I wrote to him today to make sure he said yes. Seventy thousand dollars this week, seventy thousand on March fifteenth, okay? So that's still in this year, so that would carry just that cash flow issue that we have, that we're placing one-forty there. But then July, September and December, we'll be getting, and that's in this next year's budget. So let's just ask the auditor how he wants us to.
How we treat that.
I mean, we, because, because what's weird here is that we go two years back to carry either a shortfall or surplus and put it to this stuff, so it kind of clears out. So any money that comes in next year, I think we can carry that as revenue. So, because it's gonna show a loss in the current year or whatever that we're in now.
Yep.
So, but let's just get the right term from our auditor, our auditor on that. But the good news is, is, you know, it was like a year, year and a quarter ago, you know, and it was just a lot of work going through and the resort made sure they cleared theirs up before Powder made sure that they paid theirs before they sold.
Yep.
And Great Gulf came around this week and they've ready to start sending money in.
It's good, it's finalized, right?
Yeah, it's finalized. And, and just while we're talking about it too, the easements for the water and the road should be done by the beginning to late next week, sometime next week. And while we're on that, Lisa Davis Lewis has been working with VHB for the Fonzie and all that other stuff for, and that's totally all approved as of today.
Great, that's great.
So things are starting to really come back together.
I think it's dragging their feet.
Yeah, so, but, I mean, we're gonna go into, we'll go into executive sessions for some contract stuff in here and personnel, but I'm gonna, instead of us going in right now, I'm gonna open to the public, and I don't know who we have in the public on here. There's four participants, so there's three. I can't see, so there is Kurt, Jerry and Polly, okay? Also, so since we are being recorded, I'm just gonna say that we did receive over the weekend, Tom, a petition.
Oh, yes, actually, it came in Friday, Friday afternoon.
Friday, okay, we received the petition for moving the board to a five-member select board, okay? And in the past, what we have always done is handed it off to legal, and legal has some comments on it, and Tom is going to talk to us when we go in for legal about the comments on it. Nobody's denying it, there's just some little wording that we may have to change on it, okay? We're not gonna make anyone go out and re-sign it, so we're gonna take it and get it the best we can to get onto the ballot. So can I get a motion to go, we'll first open public comment, so Polly, Jerry or Kurt? Any questions? We're gonna go into executive session and.
Yes.
Go ahead, Kurt.
I am curious about the petition. And then, do you already have all the materials?
It was presented to the town clerk, I believe Tom just told us, Friday afternoon sometime.
Yeah, and then at some point, the clerk verified that it had adequate amount of signatures, that it was a viable petition.
And during the weekend, we received it as a board, and we would normally say then, if it was given to us, to move it forward to legal.
Right.
But Tom had looked at it and said that he already, it needed to go to legal, and that's what he should have done, but I'm sure he did that like Friday afternoon or Monday morning. And he's got some information for us that we're gonna go into executive session for legal on the petition.
Is there a group that's doing the petition, the petition?
You know, the funny thing is, is with the petition, we don't ask who started the petition. There, there's seventy-one, seventy-one or seventy-five signatures on the petition, Kurt?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna ask who, you know, and they didn't, they didn't put an asterisk on it, and they didn't circle it and say, I did it, but that's not how a petition goes. You don't need to say who started it.
Okay. Doesn't seem like it's.
Yeah.
Surely, I don't perceive it in a negative format.
I just look at it as saying for eight years, we've only had last year someone run against the last eight years, where we kind of find, you know, two more. And then, to be honest with you, we've got, oh, Patrick's on now too, so we got four people, and two of them are the press, you know, for this board to be going up to five, where is everyone that wants to be part of it? So, you know, but we're gonna get it to the ballot and we'll go from there.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions, Kurt?
No, thank you very much.
Patrick, I don't know if you just got on or whatever, but we're in public comments. Have you had any questions?
No, just logging in to hear what's going on.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
All right, so.
May I just, may I say something about the petition?
Sure.
It was simply, it was simply asking for a discussion.
No, it wasn't asking for a discussion.
Well, it was presented to me in, in the wrong way, because that's how I understood it. That this was simply asking for a discussion to see if this, if the town did indeed feel this way. But I agree with you. I don't know who you would get to run, but, you know, that, but that was not part of it.
We're, we're, we're not gonna, I appreciate that, jury, but the petition specifically said to put on the ballot for a vote to see if we should move to a five-member select board. When we went to Australian ballot, we kind of took out those discussion days, okay? And, and then it specifically asked for a, another vote after because we can't have people put their names in to become a select member because we don't know if it's gonna be five or it's gonna be three. And there, if you thought it was a discussion, Jerry, and you decided to vote yes or, you still have the right to vote yes or no, based on your thoughts that you have. There, there's, there's no sense of fighting this, it's just, we're gonna get the wording correct and get it on the ballot, and then we'll have six weeks for people to talk about it in town.
And debate it.
And debate, and that will be the discussion, so maybe that's what they meant? I don't know.
Well, that's how I understood it, and if I misunderstood it, then I'm certainly wrong, and I should have taken more care before I signed it, so.
Even if you took your name off of it, it's five percent, and I don't think this board, I think we'd rather go to a discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what I believe, okay?
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions?
How about selectmen's concerns?
That's gonna be, you guys are both employees, so not the public, so next one we'll do is selectmen's concerns.
I'd like to, the light at the top of West Hill is set on a timer.
Traffic light, the red light.
Direct, not tripped like it used to be. So it's constantly cycling and stopping the flow of traffic without necessary. And it used to be set up so it was tripped when you would, when traffic would approach Killington Road. I'd like to see if our highway department could get that switched over.
I think that's the, what's that name, LaFaso?
Ah, yeah, LaFaso.
No, we switched.
Subcontractor.
I thought we had them switch it this fall, though. It was on flash.
On and off is what we can do. LaFaso, I think, has more of the control, much of getting, I think we can just turn it on and off to get to what you want, where, when a light notices a light coming up West Hill Road, so then it will turn green in a certain amount of time, but once there's no cars coming or whatever.
Really, that's, that's a complex thing, huh?
I guess.
No, it's a tripwire in the pavement, and the tripwire senses the car, and it's always been that way until recently.
Physical thing. So someone has put a wire across, it's not there now?
No, it's in the pavement.
Oh, in the pavement, in the pavement.
It's how they, it's how it's programmed.
Yeah.
But the wire is somewhere in the road.
Okay, so there's nothing, so.
I mean, I don't know.
It's in the, as you approach.
Interesting that's that technically, you would think, like, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the old way of doing it, now they use cameras, but.
That's what I was used to. Because there's a light down on old Route Four heading to West Rutland or whatever, and if you're like forty feet away from it, you flash your flashing lights, the highlights, high beams, duh, 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 and then the light changes.
For emergency vehicles, it does that, so it probably thinks your lights are LED, emergency lights.
Yeah, well, I just know that one there from my mother-in-law while she was around. She used to always say, no, no, and they swore by it, and then all of a sudden, I tried it one day, and it worked. So.
It's sort of interesting, that's a, something you have to go to a contractor for, I guess that'd be.
I'm not so sure. It's more of understanding how to.
Yeah.
Maybe Ricky was the one.
Ricky knew.
Okay, and not pass down on how to.
Okay.
So it might be a quick phone call, how do I.
Train the trainer, here you go.
You know, so if you can ask on that there.
Yeah.
Is that it, or?
Yeah, that was all I had, I just.
Rob, do you have any?
I have nothing, no.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any either right now. So can I first get a motion to go into executive session at seven oh three for legal?
A motion.
And then we'll come out of the legal and we'll go back in then for personnel, okay? Because I'm sure there's some people here, or they're gonna want to hear, this is the legal on. on the document that you said you have something that's back.
Okay.
So you wanna just go into the office over there and we can talk while these people-
Sure.
Okay, it is 7:16. We're out of executive session. Uh, we went in to discuss the petition, and I'm just gonna read a couple of things here from our legal counsel. Um, and it says, "To Tom, in his, in his, in the legal person's position, that this petition raises several issues. The first portion of the petition article, shall the town of Killington elect two additional select board members for the term of two years pursuant to is fine. However, the second clause with a special annual meeting," and he goes on to say, "We don't have special annual meetings, we only have one annual meeting." So what he is recommending that we say in this article is, "Shall the town of Killington elect two additional select board members for terms of two years each pursuant to 17 VSA 2650 parentheses B, whose terms shall take effect June 1, 2025 with a special meeting knocking out annual, okay? To be warned to fill these additional positions instead of vacancies in the event that the article passes." So what he's really saying is, is that, you know, um, the election would take place in March, we would not be able to have anyone run for position four and five because we don't know if it will pass or fail.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And upon it passing or failing, if it passes, then it kind of puts the board in a bad position because we have to run a special meeting, not a special annual meeting. And if one of us couldn't make the meeting, then we would only have two because those other two positions would not be filled. So the quorum would go from two to three to do any business. Is that about wrapped up what, uh, Mr. Barlow has told us?
Yeah, and that's why he's suggesting to, um, change this so that, it says they, the new positions will be effective June 1, 2025, and that there will be an election between this town meeting in March if this passes at the town meeting in March.
Because we also have a 30-day period after an election for anyone to ask for a revote.
Right.
So he goes on into another pa, uh, paragraph here and saying, "Say the article passes, after the 30-day reconsideration period ending April 3, 2025, the select board would then want a special meeting, town meeting, for late May to elect the two additional board members." And he said, "Say Wednesday, May 28th."
Mm-hmm.
"The period between town meeting day and the May election would allow the candidates to gather signatures for their nominating petitions." Because once again, they have to get-
Yep.
-1% or 30 signatures, whichever is less. Hopefully you two know that.
Yeah, 15, I'd say, I would have been told, yeah.
So Killington elects offices by Australian ballot, the requiring nominating petitions accompanied by consent of candidate form must be filed with the Caluckno Laythen 5:00 PM on the sixth Monday preceding the day of the election, which would be Monday, April 21st, 2025 for a May 28th, 2025 election. The two new members would be elected at the special town meeting on May 28th, 2025, and pursuant to the approved article, their terms would take effect on June 1, 2025. Since the effective date of the two new positions is known, there is no question about the select board quorum or voting requirements in the interim. It makes sense to me, and now it's, so we can then word it this way for the town meeting.
Yep, I would agree.
And then, as Jerry had said, then discussion can follow.
Yeah, 100%.
All right.
Make a motion.
So, um, I don't, do you really need a motion? I'll make a motion to accept the petition as changed by legal counsel.
Yep.
Yeah, second.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Um, so now let's go back into executive session for personnel.
You may want to ask them if they have any questions.
Oh, okay. So Kurt, Jerry, Patrick or Polly, do you have any questions? Kurt?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I understand it. I, I like the new petition.
Okay. Kurt? Hearing nothing. Polly?
Uh, is this the last date that people can petition to get articles on the ballot or is there another select board meeting that, that could happen?
I believe that it's 47 days prior to the election for a member of the town to put a petition together.
Okay, thank you.
It's six Mondays prior for the board to finish any articles.
Great, thank you.
Wit, you could be part of the public. Go ahead, Patrick.
Uh, I've, uh, I just, to Tom, um, as part of the cemetery board, were you able to, and I just missed my mind for a while, were you able to ask the lawyer about, uh, how our budget is handled through the town? If not, I can come in next week and talk to you.
I have not. I thought you were gonna do-
Yeah, I'll get with you next week.
I thought you were gonna do that, I'm sorry.
Uh, I mean, yeah, do you, um, I can get the legal's, um, contact from you and I can handle it.
The chair, on the select board, any of us can talk to legal counsel. So I guess Tom is giving permission for you as, you're the chair of the cemetery, Patrick?
Yes.
So he can tell you who and you can answer your questions.
Yeah, you could run it-
Okay, cool, yeah, I'll get with them then.
Well, yeah, run it by me and then I'll run it by him.
What's really easy, if it's Jim Barlow, is just writing an email and CCing Tom, the manager, so he sees what your question is and then sees the answer come back.
Sure. Easy, sure. All right, thank you guys.
Okay. We're gonna go into executive session for personnel reasons, since we're getting into some heavier stuff in the budget. Um, and just so people understand, Tom, why we're like taking a little bit deeper of a look. The current tax rate is like .59, call it 60 cents, and with everything in here from the personnel, um, department heads, uh, we're looking at a tax rate of, if it scares you, I'll read it.
71.
70.719, so an 11.9, almost 12 cent increase. And that's with the grand list going up 5%.
5%, yeah.
Okay?
Which is mildly risky to do it that way, but-
So, um, so that's why we're going into executive session, just so people understand. Everybody's put in there and we're gonna have our conversation now going through. Okay? Do you have any statements on your budget before we go in?
Um, will there be an opportunity, will Tom take back to us with an opportunity, hey, Wit, we need to see percentage?
We're, we're gonna work through this here and we're saying we're probably gonna have to have a meeting at the end of the week or early next week because we do have a deadline to get this in the, to the print by at least Tuesday or Wednesday of next week.
It's like somewhere like years past?
So.
Yeah.
Okay?
Sounds good.
So, uh, can I get a motion to go into executive session at 7:25? Personnel?
Motion.
All in favor? Aye.